Stand for this Temelby Titus. Two biblical names. And whereas Superintendent Howard was a long time citizen of Clarksdale, who was well known for his service to the Clarksdale community. And whereas Superintendent Howard departed this life on September 16, 2014, leaving his wife, Leela Howard, one daughter, Katrina Reese, five sons, Elsa Howard, John Howard, Luke Howard, Joshua Howard, and James Howard, and twelve grandchildren, as well as a host of other relatives and friends. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Coman County, Mississippi, wishes to memorialize the life of Superintendent Frank Howard by a permanent resolution on the minute of the Board of Supervisors of Coman County, Mississippi. Now therefore, a born motion duly made by Supervisor Burrow, second by Supervisor Newsom, and voting for said resolution with Supervisor Pearson, over to Burrow, Newsom, and Weiner. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Coman County, Mississippi does hereby commend the life of Superintendent Frank Howard for his contributions to his family, friends, and citizens of Coman County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the permanent minutes of the Coman County Board of Supervisors as a permanent record of this commendation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be delivered to the family of Supervisor Superintendent Frank Howard, knowing that this board expresses its deep and sincere condolences to the family in their loss. So, resolve this the 24th day of September, 2014. Board of Supervisors of Coman County, Mississippi, signed by President Paul Pearson and attested by the county clerk, Ed Peacock III. This is a small token of our appreciation, but we give it from the depths of our hearts. Thank you everyone.
Pull it together if I picture.
You could take that resolution out and hold it up. Okay, we'll take two shots. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you all for coming. I had Daniel would have done it just to build up. But I had the point before to speak to the young men in school.
Appreciate it. You ever seen anything like this? What's else I want to do?
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you all. You all are welcome to stay for the meeting if you like, or you may.
Thank you.
Mr. Bassett.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Howard.
Yes.
Before you all leave, there's something I want to mention to the family. And this is something that comes deep and comes from the heart. I grew up on the same street with the Howards.
Right next door.
Right next door. And I'm glad you mentioned that, right next door. Because the Howard family is like a monumental stone that's here in Coman County, Clarksdale. So I want to let you know that we, the other residents of the 500 block of Florida, we really appreciate what you all did. And your husband was like a mentor, not only for the people on that block, but for all of Coman County. And we've always said it takes a village to raise a child. And I want to thank you for being a part of our village right there in the 500 block of Florida Street. Because if you look around, what you all started right there as being our mentors, our mothers, our extended family, you can see what your children have done. All of the children, they grew up on Florida Street and the 500 block. So I want to let you know that we thank you, we thank your husbands, and we thank your brother-in-laws, Joe, ALC, and all the rest of my family. Because it's proof of what a good family and a good foundation can do. And it's spread to all of us in that block. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank all the members.
Thank you all.
And take care. Would you volunteer for some sort of mentoring program?
Oh, okay.
Brother-in-law's fault. That's not. You get awarded today, is that where you were headed?
Oh, had to leave over there.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, very nice, very good.
Thank you.
We got Lester Miles.
No, I think he still has to check. Check one more thing.
Now, the holiday schedule now, tax such as the collector's office, they're not going to be able to do anything Friday. So we just will take Saturday and Friday.
Right.
Is that your suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Can you go explain that to Justin?
Good luck.
What time is it?
That's like a longer block. That's like, you know, a little. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Governor.
Yes, sir.
You don't want to just do that thing, try to collapse.
Collapse?
Yeah.
It's for the motorbender, the 148M3 model. Thompson was the only unit that met all specifications.
Was that the only bid received?
No, yeah. It was the highest bid. But all the models that everyone else bided didn't meet specifications. But Cat bid two different models. They fitted one on specification and one that did meet specification. And it was the only one that met specification.
Why would you bid something that didn't meet specification?
I'm trying to be cautious.
Yeah, but they don't meet specification.
You're trying to meet specification. Just like on the specification.
A lot of people do that. You ask for a car, a ride-horse, a camback, and a Toyota. You're just amazed that you can't accept.
Well, I can understand it, two bids, you know, but I go, why, why would they just base?
And I'm assuming that's why Cat is the only thing bid.
Right.
Model loading one.
But the other people's, their best one didn't meet, right?
Right.
They didn't, okay.
Which, viewing their material, they had units that would be, but they didn't bid those particular units. On the road widening, Thompson was the only bid. And on the tar distributor, power equipment was the only bid. And on the wheel loader, Scott equipment was the lowest bid and met all specifications.
And the wheel loader, this was the lowest bid also?
Right, it was the lowest bid.
The road widening, and that is a?
That's a shoulder spreader.
Shoulder spreader? Because when you, to be able to gravel down the shoulder of the road, that's what that's called somehow.
Was the tar distributor the only bid? Was it an only bid, a low bid? Which one was?
It was the only bid.
The tar distributor was also the only bid. And the new wheel loader was the lowest bid.
The who then?
The new wheel loader was the lowest. And the other one above it was the only bid also. So you had two only bids.
Right.
There's two motorbenders.
Motorbenders?
Yeah. Were they low bids or?
They were the highest bid.
They were the two, the motorbenders were the highest bids.
Right. Well, they were the only ones that met specs.
So we got one highest, two only, right?
Right. And one low.
And one low bid out of five, out of six pieces of equipment.
Mr. Miles.
Yes, sir.
You say your motorbender was the highest bid. What do you say that you had several bids that came in above what you anticipated that might have been?
Several bids, yeah.
You say the highest bid?
Yeah, several bids. This was the highest number once you received. But the reason you didn't select the lowest because it was all ones that met specifications.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Highest, best bid, yeah.
Okay, okay.
My question now, the bids that you receive only one bid, the equipment that got the one bid on it, does that, I mean, was that two of?
Two.
Two. Do they, did they meet specifications?
Right, they met specifications.
They met your specification. I got this one now. Your specs was, for each one of these pieces of equipment, were they written to match a specific piece of equipment or you just put the specification out there and then found it, and then found out what, whether there were more than one piece of equipment? I don't think it meets your specification, but did you write your specification where only that one piece of equipment would meet your specification?
No, I didn't do that.
So there, there are other models, by other companies, that would or could have met your specification.
Right. Like I was saying, on the, on the motorbenders and wheel loaders, with motorbenders basically, which everybody bid, didn't meet specification with their brochure, that they had other units. There were units in that that did meet the specification, but they didn't bid those models.
In other words, you sent them the specification you wanted, yet they had a piece of equipment that met your specification but didn't bid on, didn't send you a bid on. That doesn't make a lot of sense. That don't make a lot of sense to me. In other words, what that says to me is they were trying to push something off on you that they're trying to get rid of. That's what it says to me. I don't know. If they had a piece of equipment that came within the specification and didn't bid it.
And all we had to do was to rip it.
Right. There's some, some hate, not like I was there. Okay. That's all I have. What we need to do, Mr. Brown?
Well, we got one more. They talked, the new tractor truck. I understand, Mr. Miles, that the Crowes Truck Service, Western Star Model 4700 SF, met all specifications and it gave a quote full coverage warranty. The MAC was the lowest bid, which was about $600 less than the Western Star model. But that warranty was not a full coverage. It only covered the engine. And Mr. Miles tells me, he's looked at his specs and his specs required a full coverage, which he says means in the business, bumper to bumper. And this, and the MAC only provided an engine warranty.
Right. Crowe gave a zero deductible, five-year, 200,000 mile warranty. $600 is not that much different than a specification like that. That warranty will exceed.
The cost of the warranty will exceed what you could possibly imagine?
Right.
That would mean the sales tax.
Exactly. For five years, the only thing we have to do is maintenance on it.
So in actuality, Crowe bid, with all the mentor that you requested, is the lowest and the best bid. Even though it's not the monetary low, it is the lowest and the best bid.
And that's, I understand, when he gave the engine warranty, that did not meet the specs of full coverage, right? So I think.
So how many miles you put on a tractor, three years?
Well, it all depends. We, we don't do extremely high miles around this county. It depends on where we get, we probably put maybe $25,000 a year? Yeah, twenty, twenty years, something like that.
So five years, you'd still be within your $2,000 miles, basically.
Close to five. Be close to you. We don't put $1,000 miles on them.
The time won't exceed though.
Right.
You really keep up with hours anyway, don't you? Well, the, the option of the reverse bid, where is that still anything that could be on the table that the young man talked to us about?
Well, the only thing, I don't know what time factor we can look at in there, but some of it is good enough. So we can be, especially my tractor issue. It even got out yesterday. And I think it made the last trip.
Oh, really? Well, we've been matching stuff for a long time. We really have. I guess the last big open fire, I guess, was probably 15 years ago. I was matching. We've been buying a little case here and there.
The motorbenders, we have like 98.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah. Well, you have that tractor, yeah. And that tractor, we use Hall and Gravel. Recently, we've been having to pull that tractor from Hall and Gravel when we take the tractor or something out to a job. And take it and then bring it back and hook back to the drill and send him back to Hall and swat the tractor to lower.
Who makes Western Star? Is that international?
No, uh, it's like Western Fire, Western Star brings off Ford.
What kind of engine is it? Is it CAT or Cummins?
Uh, I think it would be CAT, if I'm not mistaken.
It's the CAT, that's.
They, they use different engines then.
That's what I noticed when I asked that, the CAT or Cummins.
It all depends on the size of the engine and all that.
All right.
Sure.
And it's not the government's fault, so please don't take this the wrong way. I'm a little bit concerned with reverse, what's it called, reverse?
That's the first bid, I guess.
First bid, yeah.
Reverse auction.
Yeah. When we're talking, well, it makes us $1 million for it.
Yeah.
But I'm a little bit concerned that we get to the point where because the equipment is broken down, possibly as a fatality, we have to make a hasty acquisition without enforcing to not be able to pursue other viable options of like saving the county. But significant, one has to ask himself, why we get into this rush, rush situation? If we knew this equipment, could look at another possibility? I think we should have enough time to apply those other methodologies before we commit to excess of $1 million. We don't want to end up like, going off the road.
Yeah.
Where they don't get other than payroll.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
Again, I would say the roads have to be made in danger. But I always find it difficult when I'm back to the corner and have to make a big purchase under time constraints.
Well, too, we've got to see what financial wizard here in the class will have.
I don't know about a wizard. I don't know if there's any easy solution. Of course, you know, Mr. Miles does not have this kind of money within his budget. Different counties do different things. You've got some that have a lease purchase agreement. You've got some that go directly to the banks for the money. The Association of Supervisors got a loan program. Very few counties have been able to do some of the financing we've done, which is internal.
Right.
And, you know, looking at all those different options, probably the easiest, most cost-efficient way, if the board wants to pursue this kind of burden, would be internal financing.
What have you got to have today?
Definitely the tractor today.
About the truck tractor part, you got to pull something with it. What if we could, if we could get the financing down and agree on that part of it first? We've got to maybe make arrangements for that part. Would you be receptive to the reverse auction and just give it a spin and let you see where we're headed with it?
Uh, well.
I don't know how long the process.
Yeah, you know, I really don't know how long the process. And then we work within a time limit too, because both.
I think we could find out at least by the next meeting.
Personally?
Whether or not the reverse auction is doable from the current point of view.
Okay.
Still, because we've been at six months, six months into purchasing equipment. So I, you know, I would think it has to all be decided today.
You're good.
So you're, actually.
What you said, I want your answer.
Actually, the total amount that you were seeking is close to $900,000.
No, we have, we have one piece of equipment that in the bid process now, we need to bring close to 1.2.
What you, what I got here is today. What piece of equipment you're in bid, that's not on here. The pay. I'm looking at this, it's $897.347.5. You got here today.
Yeah. One of these, I think, two pieces.
Two pieces.
Yeah.
Probably, which one is that? The gray one?
Motorbender.
They actually, two motorbenders.
All right. Once again, I'm going to reiterate my position. If the need is equipment, state true, there is all. I'm not, I'm not going to beg to move forward on the basis that this is a rush order, now after 15 years. I'm just not going to buy that.
15 days would be okay?
Yeah. That, that we don't have time to think this is property and make any informed decision.
I think, I think everybody's in the lab. And then it gives everybody's.
I want to answer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Albert, if you don't mind, he's been over here, he's going to punch me out.
No, no.
Go ahead.
My question is for Daniel. Well, Daniel, you know the budget situation. At $1.2 million, whatever you finally get to with all your financing and all that, if you bought it off today, with the road department, can they stand it in their budget to pay a 10-year back and hire them to be able to? You shaking your head no?
No, they won't be able to. Not with the economy's in like it is right now. If things turn around and that village that is put on the road farm, the road farm gets started to go up, they can buy the fruit. If we base it on today's dollars, you know, the only way would be to subjugate it using some of the hospital reserve interest that you earn each year and probably have to make some transfers out of the general farm, major key road farm legislation now allows for it. So we have to kind of piece it together so it's.
So it's not just like, let's do it today and then see if we can get it to work. You don't have to probably get your act, your financing scheme worked out anyway. So you've got 15 days to look at it both ways.
Well, we've looked at, we, it can be done if that's your route the board wants to take. And then we want to make sure we give y'all as many options as possible before we let you see it together.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right now, if I'm not mistaken, you're going to be one option. You're even just giving us as a group one option. Internal financing is the only option we're going to go for.
I think it'd be the best option.
That's the only one that's been tendered today?
Yes, sir.
With the, with the one cent of bid that we presented here, it amounts to $1.2 million.
Yes.
Okay.
Would it hurt to contact the mass and just ask?
Not at all.
Where are the, you never know, they might have a.
Lower entry.
Entry, a entry level loan or something, I don't know.
Mr. Smith?
I'll check.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Well, I wanted to go back to the piece of equipment that you waited to get a bid on. How much do you expect it'll come in?
I estimate it could be somewhere around $125,000, $130,000.
You're talking about more than $1.2 million now? You're talking about close to $1.3 million? Run your figures, you got on the sheet. It's going to be close to $1.288,000. You said $188,000, $130,000. On this sheet is $1,130,000 on this sheet here. $1,130,000, $304.75. So if you come out another $130,000, it's like $1.2. Close to, really to three then to $1.2. If you're talking about looking for something in $130, that's going to raise that up to $1,285,000. Two motorbenders. Two motorbenders is over, over $500,000. It's $506,000. That's a million like that. Run your figures, guys, so you know what you're asking for when you start asking for a loan.
Mr. Smith?
It's close to $300,000. We got a three o'clock, so we don't want to. We got one minute, that just went in.
Hey. I believe all of us have to have mentioned what we need to do, how we need to go about even a reverse auction, 10 years' warranty, how we're going to pay for it and et cetera. But I think we need to come up with what we want to do, what we actually want to purchase this equipment. Or what? In my opinion, I think it's our responsibility to make sure the road department has what it needs in order to do the job. It's going to be up to us how we're going to do it, how we're going to pay for it. I don't feel as if we need to have Mr. Miles running back and forth. I'm not for that, because I've seen too much of that today when we have somebody, bring us a budget, bring us a budget, we send it back, bring us a budget, bring us a budget. I'm not for that. As far as reverse auction, we know about it. So we should implement, or you can request it if we look into.
Well, that gets us to start the process.
But you see what I'm saying? So, so we know about it, we need to utilize all we know. And we don't need to come to acquire my awareness. We've got some numbers and figures here before us. Then we're not willing to deal with physical exception. So it appears that we've got a little homework that we need to do and to make this project work. We know what Lester has to do. We know we need the equipment. And we definitely can't send him out to provide a service that we need him to provide, but we don't provide him the resources to do it.
I agree.
So I think that's what we find we need to come in and see what we need to get together and see how we're going to help him. Do we want that? I don't think, when you said we, Mr. Newsom. I did not, we, that not wanting to do what's necessary. My thing is knowing how much we need to borrow it.
I mean, that's, that's kind of.
That, that's mine, mine. And the doc, that we're not, that is not my intention not to punish him what he needs to do his job with. I just need to know how much money, how much money we need to borrow it and then where we're going to get the money in front of pay the note. And that, that's, that's mine. That, 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 no fee, that's just my thing in watching the county finance. Well, it's how much we need to get. If you say $1.2 million, then I expect it to be close to $1,200,000. But when you say $1.185, it's close to $1.3 million. So that's all I just need to know, how much money we need to acquire.
Right, that's it.
Not send the financial. Yeah. That's something. The third ingredient, we don't pay $1 reward.
Well, that's, I think that's just home stuff.
That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
All right, okay. Mr. Miles, don't give up on us. We're the. Mr. Miles, don't give up on some wizard brother all the way.
Motion carries forward.
The motion carries forward.
Some, a motion, I'll second it, it's all in favor.
All right. The motion carries.
I think we get the...
I think very easily. Mr. Bassett, I want, we're going to...
Excuse me real quick, I need to tell you one thing.
Sure.
Uh, it's Mr. Blue, and I'll fix on the peanut thing.
Yeah.
Y'all have executive session, so, uh, so we can do that after this, or if it takes a minute. But it just needs to be an executive session.
All right, so I guess we just need to, you want to try to finish this down, Mr. Bassett, or you want to, you come back for the executive session, or whatever, so there we go.
Kind of, you know...
I can do mine really quick.
All right, let's just say.
All right, I wanted to request the board to approve the Christmas holiday schedule.
Yes, sir.
The Delta has allowed boards to decide if they want to take Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas off.
Right.
In the package, you'll see what the Department of Revenue has issued a statement, it'll be closed on Friday. It's most of our business is trying to do the taxes and stuff, I'm asking the board to approve us to take Friday off, the day after Christmas.
So you want Thursday and Friday?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to go on. I have a motion, have the supervisor, Mr. Newton? I'll second it, I'll in favor, all right, let's have the motion carries.
Uh, your claim again on page five, claims of Lee Wood, uh, Baywood, uh, 110 dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's Mr. Aaron Peacock, uh, 1,500 dollars. Uh, there's fees and a following of multiple cases, Fox Everett. I said all right, yeah.
Oh, okay, not at all.
Yes, sir. Fox Everett, reassurance fees, 10,962, 10,962. The other claims are 37,000, dated 12,514, 38,864, 58,824, 145. Bringing the total claims, dated 51,432, 45, 51432, 45, I recommend to the board.
And the motion paid a bill, 7 million. So, have a motion supervisor, listen, have a second supervisor, open, call the favor, I, I say the motion carries.
Got five reports that I would ask the board to include under other reports and information, joint order management, district maintenance, grand jury report, letter from the secret clerk, silver dollar, flood and wet cover, global drive, uh, proof of letter from the Department of Archives, official society, Clarkson Depot, prior proof of travel for the large, small, and ten train and bank school, uh, those five things that I asked the board to include as part of the report.
The motion include these, please.
Some...
Supervisor, listen, second supervisor, verbal, in favor?
Aye.
I say the motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right, so now, do we need to just...
I tried to do this in about a minute, Governor.
All right, would a motion go in executive session?
It would be for a litigation strategy on Texas Home Peanut bankruptcy case.
All right, I need a motion, consider going executive session.
Just one, one me and...
I have a motion for supervisor, listen. Consider going executive session, correct, sir?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion, all in favor, aye. Now I need a motion to go in executive session.
Litigation strategy would be appropriate.
Yes, as always. And you can make a motion, go on.
We're going to make a session for litigation strategy.
All right, I'll second that one as well.
Texas Home, in a micro.
Absolutely, all in favor, aye, or in executive session?